Good evening, everyone. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, February 9th, 2020. The time is now 7:01 PM. Board Trustees present are Winford Adams Jr., Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jenna Gonzalez, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or electronic devices at this time. Thank you. At this time, would everyone please rise for the Black pledges? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Our next item is the superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and other trustees. Good evening. So we want to take this opportunity first to recognize that this is Black History Month, and we've been commemorating this month across the district by encouraging our scholars to do research around the theme Triumphs and Struggles You Might Not Know. Students are selecting a notable person and working individually or in a group to create a point, a speech, or some other type of project to capture what they've learned. So we're really excited to see what they're going to discover and what they're going to find as they showcase their projects in a digital exhibit later this month. So please stay tuned. We know how you'd like to participate in their projects and to see them, actually present them. We also want to congratulate the 24 Spring ISD teachers recognized last Friday night at the Houston Area Alliance of Black School Educators. We had 24 teachers that were represented as our Teachers of the Year for Spring ISD, and it was a really great online event. This is an annual event, as you know, during Black History Month, and the great accomplishments of our educators were celebrated. So we wanted once again to say a special thank you to all of those principals and teachers. Last week during our board work session, we had a very robust discussion of our middle of the year academic data. We are seeing some of the same trends districts across the state and nation are seeing with respect to the COVID slide. However, that information is important to us as we continue to develop strategies at the campus level as well as the district level to ensure our students have the supports and interventions they need to get them back on track and most importantly, meeting all those great level expectations. So as we discussed last week, we're going to continue digging more deep into the performance gaps between our in-person and remote learners to figure out what's exactly at play. We know that Dr. Cobb did share some information regarding that profile, but we definitely want to thank all of you all for asking extremely insightful questions and for keeping the focus on how we can create excellent and equitable outcomes for our students, no matter what the learning environment is. And so we accept your challenge and will continue to rise to that level. High school. So as you know, we're going to make some changes to bring our in-person high school students back to campus four days a week, starting February the 22nd. We believe this transition to a more face-to-face collaboration with teachers and peers will give our high school students an important academic boost as they work towards a strong finish to the school year. As we make this change, we want to make sure that we reassure you and our teachers that the health and safety of all of our staff and students continue to be a major priority for all of our campuses. The window to make a change to a secondary student's learning option for the fifth marking period is still open through Friday, February the 12th. We're hoping to see more of our remote learners make the switch to come back to campus. And once again, this is to ensure that our kids are receiving the education that they need and to really help with some of our failures at the high school level. Tomorrow, all parents and most campus-based staff will be receiving an invitation to participate in our Equity Study. This is also a part of our ongoing work with our partner, Cambridge Education, that many of you have already met, to ensure excellent equitable outcomes for our students. So I want to start today just by saying a special thank you for everyone that's taking the time to respond to this important questionnaire. We really need to hear everyone's voice and everyone's perspective as we look at ways to strengthen the educational experience here in Spring ISD. We do have a full agenda this evening, including a recommendation to our Board of Trustees for the 2021 instructional calendar. And we do want to take a moment just to say thank you again to more than 4,000 staff and parents who took the time to participate in our community survey, which is a large number. We also are going to be talking, taking some time to share with you the work that we've been doing with Holsworth around our leadership definition. Finally, I want to encourage everyone watching our meeting tonight to consider being a part of our new mentoring program, The Vine. So hopefully you've seen that on social media and the requests for us to get more volunteers. We're specifically looking for adults 21 years and older who are interested in working virtually with our students between 30 to 60 minutes per week. Now more than ever, we know that our students need to know that they have a caring adult in their life, that someone that's going to help them be successful. We're working now to pair students with volunteers, and we want every child who wants to be a mentor, to have a mentor, to be able to have one. We've got a lot of great information, and I get updates periodically throughout the week that more and more people are signing up. It's what's really taken off. We're excited about that work with our Community Engagement Department. So now we've got some good information for you to share, to see on our website about The Vine, so please feel free to go to our website and look at springisd.org/thevine. This does conclude my lengthy report for today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Do we have any board members who would like to give some remarks? Okay. I'd like to share with the board and everyone that last Wednesday, February 3rd, I spent my morning on Zooms from one high school to the next, from Decanee to Westfield Spring, and it was so wonderful to see the students that were signing, doing the signing for their scholarships for next year. Even in this COVID times that we're in, our students are still being recognized for outstanding accomplishments. And we had numerous scholarships being given to each one of our schools and all of their sports. So it was nice to see that. I thank the district for doing it by Zoom so that families and friends could get an opportunity to see those students signing their scholarships on that day. And then I'd like to congratulate Decanee High School on their new PTEC program that's coming. I had an opportunity to sit in on their advisory board meeting this past Monday, and it's going to be an outstanding program for Decanee. I was very appreciative of Dr. Blanson and Longstar College for partnering with us, and I'm looking forward to the support that our partners will give to us. And we know that Aldine is a friend of Spring, and they have a wonderful PTEC program at their vocational school, and they have offered to give us assistance for anything that we need. So we're looking forward to Decanee starting up that program next year. So congratulations to Decanee.
Can you share a couple of insights that you found when you were there that you were excited about that's coming with the program?
I didn't get a chance to visit the school at Aldine, or for us, it's a start for us.
Well, I'll add just a couple of things. One of the most interesting things is the partnership with Microsoft. And Microsoft is, I mean, they are really working with us to provide mentors for kids, presenters for kids, support in having volunteer people that are actually in the classroom every single day, making sure the kids have hands-on experiences. As a matter of fact, in the conversation, what they talked about is they are partners with other districts. They want to make Spring ISDs a model program. So they're wanting to change the way that they work with schools and to use us as the model for being able to do that.
Thank you. That's really exciting.
Again, congratulations to Decanee. Okay. Thank you. We will continue with our agenda for tonight. Our next item is our Points of Pride Award. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Director of Performing and Visual Arts, Dr. Joe Clark.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and wonderful members of the board. It's so good to virtually see you. And if I look out my window, I can almost, I can see the parking lot. I can see you guys across the parking lot. So it's very, very good to see you. Thank you for this opportunity to showcase some of our incredible programs, some of our principals, our parents, and most of all, our students. Tonight, we have three recognitions. You're going to have an opportunity to meet some of our amazing students in two Points of Prides and then one Spotlight. Just a reminder, the Points of Pride Awards are reserved for one of our highest, highest honors. These are often when we recognize a program or an individual that has garnered either state or national recognition, typically any of their first, a second, or on the national level, a third place award. So extremely high honor, and we have two of those tonight. And the last one is special to my heart, and I see him on the screen, and they're making me smile. You're going to love this one. It's a spotlight. And just as a reminder, for a spotlight, we recognize a program or an individual of a level, of a certain level of excellence at the local or regional level. So let's get started. All right. So for the first Point of Pride, we, I'm going to bring to the board someone that has spoken to us many times before, Marilyn Acker. If you can come off mute. Marilyn Acker is the high school, is the Spring High School head theater director. She's also the Speech and Debate Coach, and she's going to introduce her student. Marilyn, go ahead, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. I am here today to recognize a student who has received one of the highest honors in Speech and Debate. Her name is Toni Lee Schaffner. Toni Lee started her Speech and Debate journey five years ago at Duett Middle School when I took her to her first tournament. She won first place in Reader's Theater. She was then bitten by the competition bug. She has been competing in speech tournaments with Spring High School ever since. After her freshman year, she was hand-selected by our president of the Speech and Debate Team. She has single-handedly recruited over eight students to join our team. She has mentored numerous students her sophomore year. She also qualified for UIL Regional in Prose and Poetry. And by her junior year, had qualified for TFA State in Duo, Duet, NSDA Nationals in Duo. When I updated her points on November 11th, she had 759 points, and I noticed that there was a little asterisk by her name, and I clicked on it, and it said that she may be eligible for the All-American Academic NSDA Award. The qualification for this award includes a 3.5 to 4.0 GPA with a minimum of 750 points, and the student must also be in at least their fifth semester of high school. So I submitted Toni's name and all of her qualifications, and she was approved as Spring High School's first-ever Academic All-American. She's currently been honored by the rank of Outstanding Distinction, and at last count, she had 1,307 points with all of her state and national qualifications coming up. Toni Lee, we're very, very proud of you, and thank you so much for representing Spring ISD the way that you do.
Oh, big round of applause for Toni Lee. Look at that face. And Toni Lee, you can come off mute. And is that your mom right there? I wanted to say congratulations to mom.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much. Congratulations, both of you. And yeah, absolutely. Congratulations. And I do want to see, I see Mrs. Diaca Melendez in here too, and incredible programs like this don't happen without the incredible support of the principal. So Ms. Melendez, big round of applause to you too. Thank you so much. Appreciate all your support. Incredible, incredible. Congratulations. Your smile has just lightened me up. I love looking at your smile. And Madam President, I'll turn it back over to you to see if you have any comments or anything before we go on to the next one.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Did mom have any words that she would like to share with us?
Just thank you to the wonderful teachers at Spring ISD and for giving my kid a great education.
Thank you, mom. We just want you to know that we're so very, very proud of your daughter. Congratulations. Thank you. Our next Point of Pride Award, I'd like to ask Dr. Clark to continue.
Absolutely. And here we go. And so now we're going to honor an incredible staff member. And to do this, I'd like to ask the help of one of our newest joys, Dr. Crystal Collins. Please come off mute. Dr. Crystal Collins, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Dr. Clark. Thank you very much. So I'm here today to recognize Dr. Claire Lauderdale. She has served in education for over 26 years. Currently, Dr. Lauderdale serves as the college counselor at Westfield High School. She considers it an honor to empower students to reach their goals while believing that they can achieve when they believe. Each year, the National Society of High School Scholars presents awards to exemplary educators who have demonstrated an outstanding and noteworthy commitment to preparing their students for success inside and outside of the classroom. To be eligible for Educators of the Year, candidates must be a NSHSS Educator of Distinction, which Dr. Lauderdale was awarded in 2019, as well as Employee of the Year, which she received last year. Dr. Lauderdale, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'm just honored to be honored, to be recognized. So I just wanted to say that I truly enjoy what I do at Spring ISD, to touch the lives of so many people, and for the administrative support, Mr. Mason, all of our administrators and counselors. It's just not something that I could do alone. Absolutely. We work as a unit, as partners in education. So this recognition would be possible if I didn't have my Spring ISD team. So I'm grateful for the Spring ISD team to allow me the opportunity to serve with such great passion for our students, and I'm just, again, just happy to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lauderdale. We definitely appreciate your service. So on behalf of Spring ISD, we would like to congratulate Dr. Claire Lauderdale for this distinguished honor. Join me in recognizing her. President Newhouse, I would like to turn it over to you. Do you have any comments?
Dr. Lauderdale, you know, Dr. Lauderdale, how proud the board is of you and all of the outstanding work that you do at Westfield for our students. I think you're a leader for all of our counselors and college readiness there. But I haven't seen scholarships being awarded at other schools like I have from Westfield, and it's a result of the hard work that Dr. Lauderdale puts in with her students. Everyone is asking me, how does somebody from Westfield always get this scholarship and that scholarship and being recognized? And I say it's because of the work of Dr. Lauderdale. So we are very appreciative of you. I know some other board members would like to say something because they know the outstanding work that you do.
Absolutely. Dr. Lauderdale, I'm going to echo what President Newhouse said. We are deeply appreciative of your hard work and what you do for the children. And speaking as a parent of a Westfield student, I'm looking forward to three years from now, you and I and her working our way through this process. But again, the work you do is so important for the kids. And again, we're just really glad to have you at Westfield. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Dr. Lauderdale, as a parent of a former Westfield student, it has been a pleasure to watch how you have expanded, grown, and developed that program and touched so many of our students' lives. You've gone above and beyond with the level of scholarship and counseling support that they're receiving under your leadership, and I just want to tell you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Lauderdale. I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt anybody. I just, Mr. David Mason's in the top right of my corner, and I wish you could see his head bobbing and the pride over there. So I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Mason, too, for being here. And I hope you saw that. He's almost got a tear running down. So congratulations, Dr. Lauderdale. Very good. All right. And so, Madam President, we'll move on to the third Spotlight, and this is a very, very special one.
Before you begin, Dr. Clark, I'd like to go back and let my board see and recognize Dr. Crystal Collins. She is our new Director of Guidance and Counseling for the district, and I've heard some wonderful things about you, Dr. Collins. So welcome to Spring ISD.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to your guidance with us. Thank you. Welcome. Please continue, Dr. Clark.
Absolutely. And I apologize, I've had a couple of meetings with Dr. Collins, so I've already known of how special she is. So she's fantastic. So the third Spotlight is, this is fantastic, and this will absolutely warm your heart. This is the Chill Out and Read Initiative that we did over the winter break. And to help us, kind of walk us through this, I'm going to invite to the floor Dr. Matthew Perisso. Dr. Perisso?
Also, I'm very excited to share, as Dr. Clark said, over the winter break, we challenged our elementary and middle school students to choose their favorite books and take some time just to chill out and read, using our online digital library that's hosted by Renaissance Learning called My Ion Reader. So the platform has over 6,000 books available to our students so that they can choose from, and our campuses and our students, they took the challenge to heart. They logged in daily, many students. By the end of the Christmas break, there were 41,000 books read across the district and over 393 minutes. So that accounted for 6,550 hours, if you did the math. So the competition was comprised of two separate categories, the most books read and the most minutes spent reading. In the end, we have three students and two campuses that won the Chill Out and Read Literacy Contest. So each student was presented with a trophy and an Amazon Kindle tablet. And so I'm going to introduce each of them and their achievements. And so if you, when I call your name, if you could wave to the camera, and then we'll recognize everyone at the end. So at the elementary level, we have Jocelyn Chappa. She's from Eichenrow Elementary, and she won the most minutes read with 1,824 minutes, 30 and a half hours. We have Brianna Dorsey from Reynolds Elementary, who won the most books read, and she read 352 books. Our elementary campus winner was Marshall Elementary, which was led by Principal Michael Walker. Their campus spent 21,599 minutes, and they read over 1,800 books. At the middle school level, Miriam Neal from Roberson Middle School, she out-read all her peers in both categories. So the reading a total of 62 books and spent 2,684 minutes. That's almost 45 hours of her Christmas break reading. And our middle school campus winner was Bama Middle School, led by Principal Corey Leday, where students spent 5,696 minutes and read 170 books. So please join me in recognizing our winners. Madam President, Newhouse and the board, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Perisso. Guys, I think these students spent their entire spring break reading. Those hours, that is absolutely wonderful. So congratulations to each of you. I know your parents are very proud of you. You were home safely, reading during the holidays, and we know that your parents are looking forward to great accomplishments from you in the future. We can't say enough about your accomplishments. So thank you, thank you.
And, Mr. President Newhouse, we were very, very fortunate to meet with the students and prepare them for tonight, and I would be so bold as to say, if you wanted to ask them anything about their favorite book or anything else, they are extremely articulate and some of the smartest young minds that I, that we had a chance to meet. They're fantastic. So please feel free to ask them any question.
Thank you. Let's start with Jeff. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just a general comment. So like, this reading program is phenomenal, and I just want to say, like, this is how you get to be an Academic All-American in your senior year, like Ms. Schaffner. That's how that happens, is getting the kids into books, reading the books, talking about the books, discussing the books, developing those brain tools that allow you to out-debate students all over this country. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much.
And yes, we would like to hear from each of you. So we will start with that cute little darling, Jocelyn, that I see on the screen. If you will unmute yourself and let us hear about your favorite book.
My favorite book had to be a book in a series called The Sleepover Girls, and my favorite out of the four in the series was one about the four girls going on a true bouncer break.
Great, great. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for sharing. Please, please continue. How about Ms. Dorsey? I see you on the screen there, Ms. Dorsey.
There was a lot of great books.
Louder, louder.
There was a lot of great books, but my favorite was Saber Spock Gabby, because she was very determined, which reminded me of myself. She was always optimistic, and I'm having the situation, but she was sort of reminding me of myself, and she would never give up.
And Miriam?
Well, I read a lot of good books, but I think my favorite one was a Greek mythology one, and it was, I think it was about Hades. And it was, it was kind of funny because it was a whole different retelling of the story. And yeah, it had a, I read the whole series because it was really good. Yeah, it was just basically Hades was retelling the whole stories, every single Greek myth in his own version.
Now, Ms. Neal, did you challenge any of your friends as to how many books you would read and how many books they would read? Did you bring your friends in with you on this reading competition?
Um, no, not, not really, because I, no, not really.
Would have been a good idea, maybe.
And a special thank you, and I see moms and dads on the call too, and this, we obviously know this does not happen without the support of you, mom, and you, dad. So thank you, thank you, thank you, parents, for that too. So thank you for all your support, moms and dads there. And as Dr. Perisso recognized, the principals, I just want to once again say thank you, Mr. Walker, Mr. Leday, Mr. Green, I see you on the screen, Ms. Tracy Walker, and Dr. Angela Perez. Thank you guys so much for your support. This does not happen without the campus leadership that you guys have provided. So thank you extremely for the support of this, and the evidence is right in front of us. So thank you so much for your support. And with that, thank you, President Newhouse. And with that, thank you, President Newhouse. This has been a joy. I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. And yes, it, it is a joy to see these beautiful students and their accomplishments. And I can see in the chat that your schools are praising you. Jocelyn, I just saw a beautiful congratulations to you from Eichenroh. So, hey, you guys make your schools proud. Congratulations. We will continue with our next item, Agenda Participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Brinkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under Agenda of Participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. We will continue with our items on the agenda. Our next one is a Board Governance Committee Update on Legislative Priorities. So at this time, I'd like to recognize trustee and Board Governance Committee Chair, Justine Durant.
Thank you, President Newhouse. And tonight, I'm going to turn it over to trustee Dr. Deborah Jensen to provide us with an update on our legislative priorities.
It's that time in the bygone era that the legislature is now meeting. And now they have education committees for both the Senate and the House. We will be looking at the people on that, those committees to go forward with some of our main interests. Our legislative priorities that we have been looking at for months now are now getting to be, shall I say, distilled, that we have now really focused on just about four of them. And number one is the COVID-19 pandemic, that we still need the help of the state of Texas to help us identify and address student needs during this time, that we are still in under special rules and regulations and different types of assessment. So we will continue to support that kind of legislation. The next thing is, one of our main focuses in Spring ISD now is equity. And our legislative priority was diversity and cultural awareness. We are calling on Texas to support diversity and cultural awareness initiatives through staff and student education and restorative teaching and disciplinary practices that treat all students with equality. Another big issue for us is public school finance. As some of you are aware, we did have a few decreases in enrollment, especially in the earlier grades. And when you have classrooms set up, teachers hired, and you do not want to let your organization degrade and people go, it becomes extremely important to get the kind of financial support we need to maintain our system on the student enrollment and not necessarily the student attendance at this time during the pandemic. Because we have various ways that students are accessing instruction, and we feel that the enrollment is a much more fair way to finance our schools. All right. One more thing is charter schools. It's not a level playing field right now between public schools and charter schools. And we are very proud in Spring ISD of the services and the programs and the facilities that we offer students in our district. And what the ironic thing is that charter schools actually get a budget to publicize, and public schools are not allowed to publicize their programs. So anyway, we are finding alternative ways to get the message out, and that's where we're going to be going forward. So at this time, with the crises we're facing and the challenges we want to take on, those are our legislative priorities. Mr. Durant, did you want to discuss anything else?
That's all we have for tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you to the Governance Committee for sharing that information with us tonight. Thank you, Dr. Jensen. Our next item is the Public Hearing for the Proclamation 2021, Pre-Kindergarten Curriculum Adoption. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief Innovation and Equity Officer, Dr. Lupita Heno-Hosse.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, members of the board. I know last Thursday, we were able to see the full presentation of our pre-K adoption. So tonight, we have Dr. Perisso with us that will just do a quick review of the presentation and will take any additional questions that you may have. Dr. Perisso?
Good evening, President Newhouse, members of the board, and Dr. Watson. This is a review of our recommendation for pre-kindergarten materials adoption as part of Proclamation 2021. The State Board of Education issued Proclamation 2021 at its June 2019 meeting. Under the proclamation for this year, our resources are being considered for pre-kindergarten, including English and Spanish textbook adoption. Our team of teachers across the district, as well as representatives from district departments in special education, multilingual, dual language, participated in the review of the resources. And the clear winner was, was Frog Street after a review of four different vendor resources. Not only was it a winner with our teams, it was acknowledged by the state of Texas as scoring 100% in all 11 areas that were reviewed by the Texas Education Agency. Huge improvements have been made, especially in the area of literacy, which excited our teachers, as well as the support in STEM and manipulatives for students to utilize in their learning. Our teachers shared a number of comments with us about the excitement of this product as part of that recommendation from the teacher committee. And as you can see from these comments, they felt that it was the best resource available for our students that addressed issues for, and the needs of students in general education, special education, and dual language, and provided opportunities for both parents and students in physical format, as well as through blended learning and digital options. And that is the recommendation to, for Frog Street to be adopted for Proclamation 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perisso. Doc, Mr. Brinkley, do we have anything, anyone registered to speak on the agenda under public hearing tonight?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. Are there any comments from board members?
I just would like to reiterate to Dr. Perisso the importance of making sure that these materials are available to our parents remotely. And I know you're, you're working on making sure. Well, the district, I think, has done a really good job as a whole, making sure that we have hotspots for families and devices for families. But this also needs to extend for this.
Absolutely. We'll work with our technology department as part of that adoption and the vendor to ensure that it is a seamless integration for our parents and students and teachers access through our.
Dr. Perisso, I just want to compliment you on this adoption. This is absolutely the most enriching environment I see coming for our pre-K students that I have ever seen. You have so many wonderful manipulatives. And those of us in education know that sometimes when you're actually seeing something in the real world or you're having to move something around to where it belongs, it, you learn a great deal just because you're making it work and seeing what's happening. Also, I, I love the bilingual aspect of this because we have numerous bilingual programs in our district. And I think that you're just reinforcing that effort in our community. So I, I just compliment you. I invite parents to really look over this whole program. It's not just language, it's science, it's history, it's social skills. It's just a wonderful thing you're doing for our pre-K students. Thank you.
I wanted to take an opportunity to just comment. Everybody knows pre-K is near and dear to my heart, and I'm really excited and proud of the enrichment in the program that this brings to our pre-K students. Giving them that foundation really sets the stage for success. And to develop it in so many different areas, like Dr. Jensen pointed out, gives them that jumpstart that they need, you know, to get ahead, you know, and excel and become successful like we would like to see them. And so I'm really excited. The state finally joined us a little bit because we've been on the pre-K path for quite a while. So they finally joined us a little bit. So we're excited about that. But I'm really looking forward to the outcomes and the results. And this is an amazing program and curriculum that you've put together. And I just want to say thank you.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the curriculum adoption recommended by the pre-K, pre-kindergarten adoption review committee.
Madam President, I am honored to move that the Board of Trustees approve the curriculum adoption recommended by the pre-kindergarten adoption review committee.
Is there a second?
Madam President, I second trustee Justine Durant's motion.
It has been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Deborah Jensen, that the Board of Trustees approve the curriculum adoption recommended by the pre-kindergarten adoption review committee. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Human Resources and Human Capital Accountability, Julie Hill.
Good evening, President Newhouse, trustees, and Dr. Watson, and all others assembled. I have the distinct honor of being a part of bringing you an update on Spring ISD's leadership definition. I'm really excited about it because it just brings so many things together. I'm sure many of you remember that over six years ago, we launched a new vision and mission and guiding principles and core values. And, you know, many of us still have them in our offices. And more than anything, we made them a part of our hearts. It discusses and identifies for everyone who we are and what we stand for and what we want for our children. But now we have the opportunity to marry it with our new Spring ISD leadership definition, which gives us an opportunity to say how we get that done. What are those behaviors that we exhibit? And I don't want to steal any more of the show because I'm not the person that's supposed to be doing the presentation. I want to bring forth our partner from Holdsworth, Shanti Radakrishnan. I tried to give it a little better than I usually pronounce it tonight. So Shanti, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hill and President Newhouse, Board of Trustees, Dr. Watson, everyone else. It's good to be here with you all this evening. And I had the privilege of presenting to many of you about a year and a half ago, when we were at the infant stage of our partnership here in Spring, and excited to share an update on the leadership definition. So as some of you all may remember, creating a district-wide leadership definition was the first project stemming from our partnership, the partnership between Holdsworth and Spring ISD. And I've had, just been honored to work with the district and see, you know, the commitment that staff across departments, campuses everywhere has to student outcomes and really doing the best that they can for their students. And so it's just been exciting for me to be able to work alongside folks in the district. And this is our Holdsworth house that we call, and really the framework that we use when we are supporting our school districts and helping them to really achieve those excellent equitable outcomes for students. And as you'll see here on the house, the leadership definition lives at the foundation and really guides the work that we do and the things that we build with our districts. And so for in Spring's example, one of the things that we are using the leadership definition to do is start thinking about clear leadership roles within the organization, then also using those behaviors to establish a standard for identifying high-potential staff members, then thinking about ways that we can develop future leaders and what those leadership skills are, and then how we're ultimately selecting them and placing them to lead campuses successfully. So just an example of the things that we are starting to work on in the district through this leadership definition. And as Dr. Hill mentioned, you know, the mission and core values and guiding principles continue to define who we are as a district. And these things are not going away. Rather, the leadership definition is really meant to serve as the bridge between who we are and now how we get things done, really put some language to that. And this was not something that we just pulled off the shelf. It was actually quite an organic process and where we had a lot of different people involved. Some folks who were actually on this call were involved in the creation of leadership definitions. So we started way back last fall, assembled different committees and teams that comprised cross-functional members across staff. So we had central office staff, campus staff, even brought in the teacher advisory group. And these folks kind of worked in tangency with each other to create and iterate and draft and provide feedback as we worked to create the definition. And this just gives you a glance of a high level, what the process entailed. So we began with just some foundations and some research and looked at highly successful school districts, as well as industries and what their leadership frameworks were, how they were organized, then thought about what are the things, what are the qualities that we value here in Spring and that we expect to see in all of our staff, not just those with a leadership title or role, but really things, things that will apply to everybody. Went through drafts, went through wordsmithing, categorized, and finally landed on the wheel that you see there on the right. And we've got some pictures here. And I realize that you might see it and think, whoa, that was a long time ago, which it was. This is pre-pandemic, end of the school year, or end of the fall 2019, very early 2020, where we met together with these teams and really worked on, you know, creating this definition, had some good discussion, and went back and forth between the groups in creating something that really held value and meaning to folks across the district. And so this is where we've landed. We've got this broad definition that applies, again, to every adult in the system. And it's categorized in three separate categories, so outcome-driven, service-oriented, and relationship-centered. And then we've got indicators within each of those categories. So four indicators for outcome-driven, four for service-oriented, and four for relationship-centered. And we've created some additional language just to give a little more color to what we mean by student-focused, data-driven, manages change, continuous growth in learning. And, and so that is, this is the leadership definition, again, that applies to everybody. And we have launched a district-wide communication campaign to bring it to life, so that it's not just a sheet of paper that gets, you know, filed somewhere and is forgotten. But really, we want folks to embed this in the system, integrate it into the way that they are working together, and bring it to the language that they're using with each other. So the focus for this month, and teams are meeting across the district, to really focus in on the outcome-driven behaviors. And we're going to be going next month into service-oriented and the following in relationship-centered, and so that the focus really remains on this leadership definition through this year. And to that end, the communications team has worked hard to create a video that kind of brings this to life. And so I'm going to stop sharing and invite y'all to watch the outcome-driven video. And so I'm going to stop sharing and invite y'all to watch the outcome-driven video.
I like to see the kids when they come in and they smell the hot food. They like, wow, it smells good in here. I help out, backup, cashier. I do a little bit of everything. I love my job. I like to be a leader. I always encourage the staff to move up. And I have seen that. And that makes me feel great because I have pushed them and encouraged them.
Teaching is definitely challenging. And then throw a pandemic into the situation and it makes it even even more challenging. But I think the challenge is what gets me coming back every morning, every day. And every day is different, you know, especially during a pandemic. You never know what to expect. And just showing up for my students and letting them know that I'm here for them is really my main focus. And as long as I can like lead by example and show that, you know, if we can do it, if I can do it, we can do it together. And we can get through this really difficult year and just focus on the future and what's to come.
When I see students advocating for themselves, when I see students proud of their growth and their achievements, that brings me a lot of joy. And so I look forward to that every single day when I come to work. That's what gets me out of the bed in the morning. We know that we have a great impact on the world, not just the students and the decisions that we make today, but for the rest of their their life, for the rest of their educational career and for what they're going to do in the future. So we understand that the decisions we make are not just single decisions for this moment in time, but for the rest of their life.
We deal with weather every day. We deal with traffic every day. And Houston is such a big city, so you never know what you're going to have. You always have to expect the unexpected. So our top priority is picking those kids up in the morning and keeping them safe. And it's extremely rewarding for us to get these children to school because we're structuring their future. We have such a great support group here. The other drivers, they help each other out. We enjoy working here. We enjoy helping each other.
Being a teacher, that's your passion. It doesn't matter what environment you're in. The pandemic is just one situation where we got tested and we see how education evolved in front of our eyes. As long as you love what you're doing and you know how to care for the students, teachers are going to find ways because that's what we like to do. Even how hard it is, we'll find a way to reach our students.
Here in Spring, everyone can be a leader.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Very exciting to see all of it come together. I just wanted to see if anybody had questions for me or Dr. Hill about the process of creating the leadership definition or anything else.
Well, I'm excited about this infographic you gave us. Because I think there are some real complexities to excellent leadership. And you've plotted it out so that you can see the big picture and then go for what actual characteristics and outcomes that you're looking for in the leader. I think we're going to have a good time with this as we go forward with superintendent's evaluations.
I'd like to continue by saying again, thank you to the Holdsworth Foundation, the Holdsworth Center for selecting Spring ISD. And we are very appreciative of your work that you're doing in the district with our leaders. Thank you.
Your Honor, thank you.
We will continue with tonight's presentations. So our next item, again, I'd like to recognize Chief Innovation and Equity Officer, Dr. Lupita Hannah-Hosa.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse and members of the board, Dr. Watson. And I think you introduced her earlier, Ms. Newhouse, but we want to officially welcome Dr. Crystal Collins to Spring ISD as our Director of Academic Guidance and Counseling. Tonight, she will share with you our plan to create a comprehensive school counseling program that focuses on students, on counselors, and on our community. We are very grateful for your continued support that has allowed us the opportunity to focus on academic guidance of our students as well as meeting their social and emotional and mental health needs. Tonight, you will hear from Dr. Collins about our plan to merge both folk I to ensure a seamless services for our students, counselors, and community. Welcome, Dr. Collins. And she will share her screen so we can begin our presentation.
Good evening, and thank you, President Newhouse, trustees, Dr. Watson, and cabinet members. First, let me introduce myself again. I am Dr. Crystal Collins, Director of Academic Guidance and Counseling. And I've been in my role now for around three months and seven days. So prior to joining Spring, the Spring ISD family, I was the Coordinator of Counseling and ALIF ISD for the past four years. I began my career in education as a teacher and counselor in Fort Ben ISD, where I was a counselor for 10 years before transitioning to ALIF ISD as a counselor, the College and Career Readiness Facilitator, and the Coordinator of Guidance and Counseling. So I've been very fortunate to experience counseling as a professional school counselor as well as a counselor educator, where I've worked as an adjunct professor for the past nine years. I've taught at several universities, including University of St. Thomas, Prairie View A&amp;M University, and Lamar University. So it's really exciting for me to be able to educate teachers about the role and the expectations of a professional school counselor and share my knowledge and experience to help add to the changing demands in progression of school counseling. So enough about me. And I am here to share with you now the future of guidance and counseling. Spring's ISD's Guidance and Counseling Department and Mental Health and Related Services Departments have done a lot of great work individually and have provided really a great deal of academic and mental health supports for our students. As we as a district move forward collectively with guidance, counseling, and mental health, the department's priorities will focus, will be directed toward our students, counselors, and community partnerships. Our students will receive that intentional guidance and mental health support. Professional school counselors will be engaged in highly quality professional development. And we will continue to establish community partners. This work really aligns with the leadership definition we just heard about from Spring ISD. So we have our students, and that's our relationship-centered category. And the indicators that building that trust and showing compassion for our students, for our counselors, the outcome-driven category, and student-focused, continuously growth and data-driven. And our community partnerships is service-oriented, where the category is being team-focused and just making sure that we're nurturing those partnerships and using those partnerships to empower our students through our different partnerships. So as we begin with our students, excuse me, we will look at, I'm sorry, for as we're looking at our vision for counseling and mental health, let's take a glimpse into what our counselor numbers look like at each level. So at our elementary schools, we have a total number of 35 counselors. The average caseload per counselor is 610. Our middle schools, we have 23 counselors. I know we have 24 middle schools, but one of our middle schools is without a counselor at this time. And so the average caseload per counselor is anywhere 331 or 317. And our high schools, the total number is 32. It's 36 when we include our college counselors. And the average caseload per counselor is 304. So the American School Counseling Association recommends a 250 to one. And Texas recommends 350 students to one. Our current high school stacking formula is 382 to one. So we are doing great at 304 students at the high school level per counselor. So I'm very, very impressed with those numbers. So as we're looking at our vision for counseling and mental health, and we're beginning with our students, we will look at guidance. Our professional school counselors will continue to build and and maintain those meaningful relationships just by dedicating their time to just service to our students through guidance. This guidance consists of direct and indirect services, group guidance and individual guidance, and group counseling as well as individual counseling. This is inclusive of guidance lessons that are going to address the academic, behavioral, social, and emotional barriers that may interfere with growth and our students' just academic success. So what does this look like? Well, it involves our professional school counselors spending that recommended 80% or more of their time on direct services with students. Our professional school counselors will be expected to meet with our students at least three times a year. We don't want our students, our families, to be concerned with not being able to meet with their counselors. When they go to their counselor's office, they want, we want our counselors to be accessible to our students. So they're there and their families to be able to meet whatever needs that they have at that moment. Next, we're going to focus on our social-emotional learning. Student success will be promoted using an adopted social and emotional learning program to include career SEL lessons that can be delivered through guidance lessons. SEL focuses on a set of social, emotional, behavioral, and character skills that support success in school, the workplace, relationships, and the community. So this is in alignment with the mission of Spring ISD to prepare students to be lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and responsible citizens who display good character, ready to contribute, compete, and lead in today's global society. Research has suggested to us that time that is spent in SEL can facilitate academic learning. And so that's why it's so important to us. And research has also shown that children who are able to really effectively manage their thinking, their attention, their behavior, are also more likely to have better grades and higher standardized test scores. So we can see this direct link or this direct correlation between social-emotional wellness as well as the academic achievement of our students. And again, this aspect of SEL really addresses the second part of our mission, ready to contribute, compete, and lead in today's global society. Isn't that what we want for our students of Spring ISD? And so it's going to fall on all of us, including the counseling department, to ensure that that happens. So when we're speaking of social-emotional learning and mental health, they are very different. Mental health is really just that state of being, how that person is mentally, right? And so what we plan to do with our department is just employ a systematic approach that supports students through community, mental health, and school resources. Students will be provided those preventative lessons as well as remedial interventions that will really address those mental health concerns that are preventing our students from learning. Services will be planned basically in anticipation of students' needs. And we also want those services to be just responsive when those anticipated needs arise. So it's very important that we're looking at that prevention and we're prepared for when those needs or those crises happen with our students. And we're prepared to support the students and where and what they need. So we will definitely have procedures in place to systematically identify students at risk and to implement those strategies designed to decrease that level of risk or that risk level. And we'll lean to those wraparound services where we're really relying on the support of our mental health specialists and our behavior specialists as well. And we want to ensure that we support our students as they return after any type of mental health hospitalizations, that we have supports in place that are going to help our students in making that transition back to the to the school setting.
Dr. Collins, may I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
I love your enthusiasm about the social-emotional learning. I've become very enthusiastic myself, having gone to certain sessions at TASB. Do you use certain programs, prefer certain programs for different levels of education?
So it's, I mean, there are different programs out there. Some programs are, of course, have a cost that goes along with them. And then there are some that are free. And there's rethink ed, which kind of works better with the secondary level. One of the programs that our district has already used on Quaver Music. And so they also have a Quaver SEL program for students. So that's an option for our students. Also, Zello is a career SEL lesson program. There's, I believe it's called Y Try. That's for more of our elementary level. So to, we're really still researching just a comprehensive program. And if we're unable to find a comprehensive program, we're definitely going to find a program that's going to meet the needs of for our students here in Spring.
Did you have an opportunity to see the pre-K materials?
Yes.
Their social emotional?
Just on the presentation.
Okay. There was one where they teach kids when they have a problem, that they can't figure something out, not to get angry, ask for help. You know, I just, you know, there were just nice little hints for kids that they may not have been in a position before where they had to solve a problem. But I just think we're hitting it from pre-K through graduation here. And I absolutely support that this will help academics. It'll help their future life. It will just really be a wonderful addition. Thank you.
Absolutely. And it's so important that we do start this at the elementary level and continue. And we don't stop it. Oftentimes, you feel like our students get too old for the social-emotional. But it, I mean, social emotion is for adults. We're learning how to manage our emotions. And when you have adults that are not making responsible decisions, you're like, oh, they missed that that lesson in social-emotional learning. And so it just continues on throughout adulthood, essentially. So thank you. Thank you very much for that.
Dr. Collins, I've encountered, so I did a fellowship last year where they, I got to observe social-emotional curriculum, actually in Austin, where they taught kids mindfulness and meditation and just gave them tools to cope with their emotions. And I think I've seen some skepticism of social-emotional learning that's kind of about people not really understanding what it is. And you made the distinction between social-emotional learning and mental health support. And so I just think it's really important that we educate our parents and educate our community about this thing. Because the people in the room that were with me that were skeptical thought it was just sort of, you know, soft, you know, fuzzy-wuzzy sort of magic stuff that they didn't really want to spend money on. And kids, especially in this pandemic we're in right now, there's, I'm seeing studies and reading articles that are talking about the extraordinary stress that families in general are under, much less kids. And they do need those tools to cope. So I look forward to seeing what program, whatever program we come up with, I look forward to seeing what that is.
Thank you. Thank you. And you make a very, very valid point with that. And it's not always about the the warm and the fuzzy. It's just really making sure that our students are, they're self-aware and they have those self-management tools in their toolbox to help, of course, make them productive citizens of society. So thank you for that. Okay, so as I was talking, speaking of the 80% of the time that counselors will be spending with students, we have the Spring ISD Guidance and Counseling Direct Services Guidance Plan. And as you can see, the four service delivery components fall under the state statute of what school counselors should be doing and how much time they should be spending doing it. That being said, we have our guidance curriculum, which we're really looking at the awareness and skill development. And so it's recommended that 35% of the time is spent at the elementary level, middle school 34%, and high school 15% for responsive services. That's that prevention and that intervention that I spoke about earlier. And so it also addresses academic concerns and substance abuse amongst our students and any type of grief and loss they may be experiencing. So at the elementary level, it's expected So at the elementary level, um, it's expected time spent should be thirty percent or recommended. Um, recommended time spent at middle school is thirty percent and high school is twenty-five percent. Our individual planning, um, where our counselors are working with our students individually and in groups and just goal setting with them, where they're addressing the, um, educational, career, and personal, social aspects. Um, elementary schools, the recommended time is five percent. Our middle schools is fifteen percent, high schools twenty-five percent. And, uh, system support. And that's the indirect support of students, um, through program delivery, um, and, uh, parent education programs. So elementary schools, the recommended time, uh, spent is ten percent, middle schools ten percent, and high schools, uh, fifteen percent. As we continue with the vision and we're looking for, uh, towards our counselors, the focus on counselors is providing just that continued opportunities for professional school counselors to access resources that will allow them to sharpen their content knowledge and skills in those four service delivery, um, components that we discussed. It's really just about building capacity, uh, within our professional school counselors. And so we wanna make sure that their professional experiences will really assist them in providing supports to students in their educational, career, personal, social, emotional, and their mental health development. Um, next, we're, we're looking at implementing a data-driven, um, comprehensive school counseling program. And notice I, I put a lot of emphasis on the data-driven because this is definitely not new to the counseling department. The problem, it's just happening in silos. And so, uh, the department will provide a more systematic approach, um, just to implementing this comprehensive school counseling program, using data to drive not only those district-level decisions, but those campus-based decisions as well. Um, and then we have our collaboration and consultation, which is really a vital part of our school counselors' role. Professional school counselors, um, will continue to just collaborate with those different stakeholders and provide consultation that leads to well-coordinated services for all of our students, uh, within, that could be with our different content areas, um, our campus administrators, uh, mental health and behavior specialists as well. As we're looking at our compu- uh, community partnerships, we wanna continue to nurture at those partnerships that we have with Lone Star and Prairie View A&amp;M University, Emerge Trio, um, College Community Career, Community Youth Services, and, um, CIS or Communities and Schools. And also establish new partnerships with, uh, our institutions of higher education and other mental health agencies. So, um, as we're thinking about establishing those partnerships, we also want to look at mentors. And I know that we talked a lot about that earlier. And so we wanna establish community partnership, partnerships, um, that provide mentors for our students, not just in high school, but as they spring beyond the walls of Spring ISD. Um, and so as they're moving forward to their post-secondary plans, have those mentors that follow them along throughout high school into, um, college and just be that support. We all remember how, you know, you, you, you think that you're, um, adult enough to kind of handle things, but it never hurts just to have that extra push and that encouragement and someone that you can turn to to service that mentor for you, um, as you're, uh, making your way throughout high school and, um, to college. And then also we want to have partnerships that build a continuum of care. We want to continually build quality relationships, uh, with our stakeholders to just provide this continuum of care, um, to meet the mental health concerns of students while working with our community mental health agencies. Um, we know that sometimes our students have some mental health concerns. And so, uh, we wanna make sure that the services that they're receiving, that we can still support them within the school setting, uh, once they're, either they return back to school or while they're in school and still receiving services from outside agencies. And so, um, we definitely will ensure effective and, uh, clear referral procedures in doing so. So you've heard the vision moving forward with a specific focus on students, um, on our counselors, and our community partnerships. And changes is not always easy, but change has, has to be systemic and systematic. Um, in order to identify where to start, we will begin with a needs assessment, um, to recognize the why, the how, and the what. Um, the why is going to identify the counseling and mental health department's purpose. Um, what we really wanna do is just be able to assess what's currently happening and really use that information and utilize that information, um, to help direct how we plan to move forward and build, implement, and undergrad a comprehensive school counseling program. So the big question is, what's happening in counseling in Spring ISD? And we're going to use a needs assessment to determine that. Uh, we will identify the needs by using a research-based, uh, data collection tool and completing a, uh, data analysis. Um, the how is the plan, what are we gonna do? Well, we're gonna set those measurable goals based on the information, um, that we receive from the needs assessment, identify a strategy, determine those actions to take, and then we're gonna implement and monitor and continue to evaluate and make sure we have consistent routines and procedures and expectations. Um, and just make adjustments as needed and, uh, receive feedback on those areas that's important. So what does this implementation look like? Well, it is a phase-in approach. Um, the implementation and the execution of a comprehensive plan is just, it's going to be strategic. And it's going to begin at the district level, where clear expectations will be established at the district level and principals and campus administrators, um, all of our campus counselors are informed and trained in the role and execution of implementing this comprehensive school counseling program. Um, with that phase-in approach, we're looking at phase one, uh, where we will identify the needs and provide campus training. Phase two will be more of the implementation on the campus and making sure we're consistently monitoring and making changes as necessary. And then our phase three is that full execution of the plan with all stakeholders involved. Um, that's inclusive of our teachers, our support staff, um, our other stakeholders, community agencies, and other school personnel. So as we're thinking about how this delivery of this comprehensive school program is going to take place, um, we want to deliver by building, um, continuity. So we're going to lean to a tiered approach to immediately identify student success in support of students' learning. So it's kind of looks like the, the MTSS or the multi-tiered, uh, system of support as we're implementing this. And so as you can see, tier one is comprehensive, it's universal, where all of our students will receive equitable access to services and information and learn those skills at their developmental levels. Um, so this includes the guidance curriculum where students are taught, um, to develop transferable skills through guidance lessons and career SEL lessons. Um, tier two will consist of increased, direct, specific, and those intentional services provided through, again, our guidance curriculum. And it's inclusive of group and individual planning. And then we have our tier three, and this is more, uh, student-specific. It's, um, it meets the needs of an identified yet smaller population of our students. Um, professional school counselors may provide those individual counseling interventions, um, for, for specific students. And services that are provided at our, our tier three level are provided only until the student's needs exceed the duties and competencies of the school counselor, what's in the school counselor's wheelhouse, um, of services to provide within the school setting. Uh, once we make it to this point, um, that's when we'll really lean towards those wraparound services and begin to refer students to other district or community services to address, um, the needs of the students. So as you can see, this tiered approach comes with reviewing and revising and just refining and just making sure we are constantly monitoring and evaluating, um, to ensure that it's, it's effective um, for accountability purposes and to ensure the needs of all of our students are being met. And we want to know that we are truly making a difference, um, in, within the lives of our students in Spring ISD. So counseling and mental health coming together is very interconnected as the heart. So as we know, the heart is this vital organ that keeps the body living and moving, um, just as counseling and mental health are vital to keeping our students and our staff successful. So all of the sections that you see here are what we do and what we want, and we want to do them exceptionally well. Um, and that's the prevention, the intervention, the direct guidance with our students. So this is where we're coming from, when we're talking about our twenty-first century school counseling program in Spring ISD. So we're stronger together and we need them both to build relationships with every child. Thank you. Any questions?
Dr. Collins, can you go back to page nine?
Which page?
Page nine.
Page nine?
Yeah, you just passed it, that one.
This one?
So, uh, I like this, this phased program. What's the timeframe on this?
Um, a lot of the implement, well, the, the planning is basically starting this semester. Um, and then we hope to have a full face and approach by this time next year.
Okay, so I, I just missed the second half of that.
We hope to have a full face and, uh, approach by this time next year.
So from phase one to phase three with all of our teachers, stakeholders by this time next year?
Yes, if not sooner, the goal is this time next year. Because at this one, we want to make sure that our counselors are being trained, um, receiving the necessary training that they need, um, and that we have programs and processes in place um, as we begin to implement and get buy-in from all of our counselors and other stakeholders.
So what's missing for me here is benchmarks. Um, I don't wanna wait until next year to get a report on our progress.
Okay.
Uh, and so it'd, it'd be useful for me if we would know phase one, we had a continuum or a time scope of when we think we'll be mostly complete with that and able to move on to phase two and so on, so that we can check ourselves for progress as we go.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. We'll make sure I have benchmarks in place to give a more succinct, uh, timeframe of when everything will be accomplished. Absolutely.
Well, first I wanna say welcome.
Thank you.
And this is a lot of, lot of work, and I'm really impressed with the, uh, framework that you have set out.
Thank you.
I, I'm, and I'm glad that trustee Adams talked about timelines, cause that was gonna be one of my questions. And I also feel that this is an area where we've had, um, a need and opportunity in the district. So I'm excited about the direction you're taking. I really would like to hear, like, kind of your starting point. You're at your first ninety days. Um, and what kind of engagement have you had with our current counseling staff? And what are some of the things that you saw? I know, uh, our high school ratio is good. Um, what are some of the other positive aspects you saw? Or what do you think are our greatest opportunity areas?
Um, you know, there are, are so many areas of, uh, opportunity here in, in Spring ISD. And that's why I'm very so excited, uh, to be here. Um, my first ninety days, I have spent a lot of time, um, meeting with district, uh, personnel, but I have had the opportunity to meet with, uh, campuses as well. Um, the campuses have shared with me their meeting times, their Google links or what have you. And I've popped in on their meetings and had those, uh, conversations with those counselors at the campuses. Um, I've started, I'll be starting this week, I believe, with those, uh, one-on-one individual, uh, conferences with the college counselors. And then I will also extend that on to, um, individual conferences with the middle school and the elementary counselors as well. I have attended, um, elementary meetings and addressed a lot of the concerns that, um, they have had as far as, uh, uh, time spent being able to counsel, um, students. And so that's something that we've discussed and we're, uh, working on a plan to make sure that we can, um, have our, our counselors spending more time with our students. Um, since I've been here, I've had, uh, one transcript, international transcript training for the secondary counselors, um, and that proved to be a very beneficial training for the students. I mean, literally that same, uh, the counselors, literally that same day, the, the counselors had just so many questions because they had some transcripts that were sitting right there on their desk that were pressing. And so that training was very beneficial and the, uh, trainer was able to address some of those, uh, concerns that they had as well with those international transcripts. Um, yes.
That's great. I, I kind of worry a little bit right now with the environment we're in. A lot of it's virtual, you know, it's hard to assess sometimes. A lot of times when you're counseling with an individual, body language can tell you a lot. And, you know, doing some of that virtual, you know, and continuing to meet the needs, it's almost like it has to be reinvented, just like we're learning how to, we're calling it our new norm. But especially from a counseling perspective, I would think that there has to be, you know, some more innovative, um, pathways, you know, to reach our kids in, in the different environment that we're in. And so I'm not, I'm, I'm not asking you to speak to that, but I would like, you know, maybe to take a look at that and, and get your thoughts on how we can move forward in our counseling program, given the change in the environment we're in right now. But welcome and thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Collins, this was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. I had a question, um, I think I know the answer, but on page five, when the breakdown of the guidance curriculum and the percentage, is the expectation that less time is needed spent, uh, one-on-one with high school students? Because the expectation is that they should have gotten it maybe previously, I guess?
Under which, uh, component?
The guidance curriculum.
Oh, the guidance curriculum. Yes, that is, that is pretty much the expectation. But even though that percentage is lower, school counselors can still be very creative and working with their students through guidance curriculum because they can still provide guidance and SEL lessons as well as working with students, showing them how to, on the secondary level, uh, showing them how to, uh, um, calculate their GPA and understanding those credits and learning those kind, having those kind of lessons with them as well. Because it's very beneficial for students to kind of have an idea of where they are. So they're able to advocate for themselves and say, you know, miss, I was looking at my transcript and something didn't seem right here, or I have a question about this. And so providing those, uh, those group or those, um, individual lessons with those students in those areas as well. So sometimes when we think guidance curriculum, we always tend to think, oh, elementary level and, and, um, going into the classroom with the kids, which that is definitely what we want to do. But we can have those guidance curriculum opportunities with our high school students as well, our secondary students.
Okay, and I may have missed this, as it relates to the mentors, how are they gonna be selected?
Um, right now, we're working, um, with a partnership with College Community and Careers. And so through their program, they have mentors for our students, um, in high school and beyond. And, um, I've also have a meeting scheduled with, um, Mr. McKeithen, um, to speak to him about how we can collaborate on getting mentors into our schools that are gonna work with our students beyond high school.
And, and with that, are you going to tap into, um, you were talking about some of our, uh, strategic partners that we have, our stakeholders. Will you all be engaging them in that process?
Yes, 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 we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Collins, I assume that you're really heavily into the needs assessment right now. It sounds like you, with the visiting and everything like that. And I noticed that you're also gonna be using a data collection tool. Uh, do you have a favorite one that you're gonna be using? And what kind of data will you be collecting?
Well, not necessar- I mean, we'll, we're gonna use surveys, pre-test, post-test. Um, and again, like I said, just wanna get a big picture of what's happening in spring right now. Um, I've had, like I said, I've had an opportunity to meet with some counselors and, and that's just the, um, you know, the, with interviews and getting information. But definitely wanna see what the numbers look like as far as how often are, are counselors meeting with our students? Are, are counselors meeting with our students? What concerns are, are counselors meeting with our students about? Uh, what are some of those pressing concerns right now? And, um, having that information is gonna help us guide and say, okay, we have students that are experiencing X, Y, Z concerns. And so we need to make sure we put some processes, um, in place to address those concerns because this is a high need for our students at this time.
We're in such a weird time right now.
We are.
You know, I just don't know sometimes how teachers and counselors do their work. I have a daughter who's a teacher, so I get an earful of another district, okay? But, uh, I, it just, I, my heart goes out to all these people trying to provide assistance, uh, to others when they have such a challenge. Dr. Watson, do you have any crystal ball that you can tell us when we're gonna have a regular school district again?
No, I, I wish I did. I'd probably be the wealthiest man. However, one of the things that we constantly hear when I have my, uh, student, uh, student groups is, uh, regardless of the level, especially high school, our kids are craving for the SEL and the mental health support from counselors. And they say it every, I mean, they're trying to cope and figure out how to handle all this. And so that's been one of the things that, um, we've shared with, uh, Dr. Collins, that our kids really need that help. Um, and they want to meet with their counselors, um, from a mental health standpoint. And so we're looking at outside resources, but also looking at ways that we can engage our counselors with them on a more regular basis.
It occurs to me that while you're conducting- It occurs to me that while you're conducting your needs assessment of our district, it's an opportunity to collect some data that we might at some point uh be able to take to the legislature. I know we already have our legislative priorities, but as you said, uh trustee Durant, it's a whole new world. And what was useful and good a few years ago ain't really working for everybody now. Um, and so while we're collecting the data from your needs assessment as you go through the district, I'd love to see some data at some point on, like what, what is really working and what's not working? They sunset stuff all the time in Austin, so we need to sunset some stuff and bring on some new programs. I think we just ought to be prepared to do that.
And not just what is working and what isn't working. Kids need support right now. It's, it's um, it's a mental strain on them and everything in the environment, which puts even more pressure on our counselors. And I know, just to be transparent, in my conversations with them historically, some of their challenges have been the scope of work that's expected of them on their desk. And so, you know, my, my ask is, as you do that needs assessment, what's, what's included in the scope of their role that really doesn't belong there? What's included that's prohibiting them from being able to give our scholars what they need to be successful? You know, and those are the kind of things I'd like to hear about. And also, you know, from a budget perspective, you know, how do we support that need? You know, how do we find a way uh to support that need? Because I think this is an area that's really critical right now. I mean, that suicide's up, people are stuck in their homes, it's just a lot. And so, yeah. So the, the more we can support it, the better. But uh to trustee Adams' point, it's going to look different in the future than how it looks now. And then how do we support that? And as a board, what policies do we need? How do we revamp how we're spending the money, you know? And um, so I think as you are doing your assessment, think about all of that. So you can, you know, come to us and let us know very transparently, here's where we are and here's what we need. Because I know I can speak for my colleagues, we all have a heart for what's best for kids. And I think if they're not okay, and we aren't giving them the guidance they need, we're failing them. And so this is really critical and important. I'm very passionate about it. So I'm excited that you're here and I'm looking forward to your findings.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
I, I'd just like to add one last thing, and that is um I noticed that you're including teachers here. And uh I can tell you, there's so many opportunities for teachers to provide some of this. And I like the pre-K curriculum that uh if you're frustrated, don't get mad, ask the teacher. You know, that's just, you know, it's just part of the curriculum. And that uh students get that social emotional learning right there in the class. And it's going to make it easier on the teachers because you're going to have a whole lot better uh classroom control and classroom uh response. Thank you.
Yes, and we want it embedded and we want it, we really want it to be part of our Spring ISD culture, the culture of Spring ISD. So thank you.
Dr. Collins, we are, when I say we, Spring ISD, the district, is beginning an assessment on equity in our district. And you mentioned that your counselors had a stack of international transcripts that uh they are going through. So I know they did appreciate that workshop on evaluating that. But as part of the data that you will be collecting, there will be a concern too that we are meeting the needs of those international students that we have to have, I mean, we have to take and educate and support. Do we have a, a large number of students coming into our district moving in with international transcripts?
We certainly do. And I was shaking, I know, as Dr. Collins is jumping in. And our largest number is at Westfield High School. So a lot of our English language learners, recent immigrants, um, a large group from Central America. But we also have other languages um that are coming in from, um, we've got from Africa. I know um Ms. Hope keeps track of them. So yes, they do come in with those um transcripts from out of the country. And the training that we have has been really important so that the students do not have to retake courses or get put back a grade like the old days, right? So very important to have that uh training available for our counselors to put the kids in the right grade and validate the work they've done in their home country. And so we will also work on collecting the data as you were asking, you know, what type of services have we been delivering? I know we do have a tracking system that we can pull the data that we have up to date as far as services that have been rendered around mental health support, around um immediate uh needs that the students have. And I know Dr. Collins has been pulling, you know, pulling a lot of data. And our plans are really to provide you ongoing updates. We'll certainly create that timeline with milestones because it helps us stay on track. But also we'll give you um updates as we go along through our board updates. And then, you know, absolutely be more than happy to come back later in the spring to share, you know, the first part of the um data analysis that we've collected and, and give you an idea of the direction that we'll be moving.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Our, our students are very needy. And the board has always said, students first. So whatever support the board can give, uh please let us know because we want all of our students, all of our students to be successful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Dr. Hinaos, sir, I think you have another presentation for us.
And I know that's what all of y'all have been waiting for and a lot of the community that's joined us. And I hope you did your homework and looking at the notes from our survey, from our um parent, community and teacher survey. And so it is um an honor to be here with you um tonight um to talk about our twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two instructional calendar. We do have some guests with us in um, in our virtual room um that will um talk to you in just a minute. And what I wanted to do was just to set a context. So you um get a refresher on how we develop our instructional calendar, but also for those community members and school staff that's out in the audience tonight. I want to go over quickly a development process of our calendar. I do want to share with you some of the historical feedback that will ground our work as well as guiding principles. And finally, we'll look at the two options that were out in the community getting feedback. And we will really focus on what we're calling voices from the field, the people that worked on the committee, and I'd like um to give them an opportunity to share with you. And so the process um is, starts out with a calendar committee that's um developed. That calendar committee is made up of teachers, of parents, of school leaders, of central office. And from the teacher's perspective, we have our ACE committee members that are also in there. We always develop at least two options. Those options come into cabinet, to senior uh leadership, we get feedback from them. It goes back to the committee, then it goes to the ACE committee. ACE committee gives us feedback, goes back again to that calendar committee. And finally, we post those two final calendars up to get input from our entire community as well as staff. And then finally, it comes to you, so you see the results and we finally adopt our calendar. And this is just an overview of the members that served on that smaller planning committee that really did a lot of the research on this. You know, ACE members, um, school leaders, as well as central office. This was the timeline that we followed. And we're fortunate enough, um, through our superintendent, we're part of the Region Four Collaborative. And so we have access to calendars from other districts as well as their survey data. So we get insights because it's very important that we align to our um districts, surrounding districts. We gather lots of data, we assemble our committee in December. And then in January, that's when we really start the meeting uh process. And we meet at five o'clock, sometimes it was seven, seven-thirty, and we were still in the meetings, right? Really talking it through and giving options and listening to the field. We call this a big um feedback cycle. As I said, ACE gives input, our cabinet, our school-based um uh participants. And then finally, onto the website and then here to you in February. Historical feedback, you know, just some of the things we've heard year after year. The idea of starting the cap, the school year in the middle of the week, that seems to be very helpful. Um, also, you know, don't have short weeks, you know, three days or less just hurts um attendance. Plus, it's a hardship on our parents, except for the very first um week of school. Our community really likes that one week off in Thanksgiving. And if possible, our community, both school and um home, like, you know, to try to have three weekends during the winter break. We always align to Lone Star, uh North Harris, that's our partner. And our um early college now sits out there. To the very best of our ability, align to the surrounding districts, balance our semesters, finish the fall semester before the winter break, something very important to our high school um students and uh staff. And if possible, early dismissal days that could support parent involvement, engagement, as well as professional development for our teachers. Some guiding principles that we always follow, some are district-based and some are state-based. For example, our very first one, um, we are a district of innovation. We submitted that plan about five years ago, gives us the opportunity to start the year before the fourth Monday in August. Um, from the state, we have to ensure that we meet the minimum requirements of seventy-five thousand six hundred minutes. And I want to make sure, are you all seeing my presentation? No.
No, you haven't, you haven't shared your screen.
Oh, I am so sorry. And I just got a text and I want to make sure because I know we have members in the audience that um reminded me, thank you for um reminding me that I am just flying through and didn't um share my screen. Now, is it up on there? Yes, thank you, you, thank you. I know we have uh teachers out there that just texted and said, Dr. H, we can't see what you're, you're presenting. But I'm so glad you all had your hand out there. Um, so definitely, state requires those seventy-five thousand six hundred minutes. Build in a daily schedule of four hundred and forty minutes for us here in spring. One of the guiding principles, very supported by our um school leadership. This year, and, and what that does is that we're able to build in those make-up weather days. So instead of having to come in after a flood or um snowstorm or something like that, we build it into our calendar. And this year, the state, the commissioner actually came back out and said, districts, please go ahead and build it in, build in at least seventy-nine thousand minutes. And, you know, we are right on target with what the state is saying. Another guiding principle is that we move to a nine-weeks grading cycle for all levels, elementary, middle and high. And finally, that we may include those early release days. And so that's just an overview of the feedback we've received from our community as well as the guiding principles that we use to develop our calendars. And so you do have the two options. I know we looked at them last um Thursday. And so what I'd like to do now is to um invite one of the members of our committee, uh Ms. Michelle Starr, she is one of our assistant superintendent of schools. And I want her um to um tell you a little bit about our committee and the work we've done. Ms. Starr?
Thank you, Dr. Hinaos. Good evening, President Newhouse and members of cabinet. And of course, Dr. Watson, it's a privilege to be here. Absolutely, this is a cross-functional team and I've had the privilege of working with these members of this master scheduling team ever since COVID hit. And we really started to look at our master schedules and the needs for our calendar to meet the needs of our students in our pandemic and now hopefully going to post-pandemic as we plan for our twenty-one, twenty-two calendar. There were many components that we discussed and we wanted to plan with the end in mind. We wanted to look at what are those critical needs of our students and ensure that the calendar options meet those needs. So of course, Dr. Hinaos has talked about the instructional minutes, that is a requirement by the state. But in addition to having those instructional minutes is building in those extra days because we live in Texas and you could have a Monday that's like a spring day and a Tuesday that you're covered in fog, hmm, like today. And by the end of this weekend, you might be in ice or snow or cold as the forecast is possibly leaning towards. So this is Texas, you have to be prepared at all times. And so that's already built in to ensure that our students aren't going to miss instructional time. In addition, this second component was huge and it's a balanced semester. When you look at our schedules in the past, we tended to have maybe ninety days in the first semester and ninety days in the second. And so you're thinking, okay, that's balanced, but that never took into account all the testing that comes in in the second semester. And as a former teacher and a principal myself, I know the hardship when you're trying to build that curriculum, you're trying to teach that content, and you're trying to ensure mastery of skills, and you've got testing days. Well, now that's been taken into consideration. So we're hoping that gives our teachers a, a little bit of peace knowing those days have been taken into consideration. So they will have equal number of instructional days in this calendar. In addition, we, we definitely have to keep that PD, that foundation at the beginning of the year supports, getting us all off on the right step, the right mindset and focused on the springway systems and routines and those expectations. And so we still have that in our calendars. We also wanted to include those parent conference days. And so that was an end in mind, making sure that we had both a spring and a fall and a spring day where we can connect with our parents and build that bond, because as we always say, it does take the village. And then in addition, making sure that we had some similar options for, for staff and parents to look at, but then also some options such as ending before Memorial Day. You, you've heard that as a, as a request. And so those were some of the processes and the end in mind that we were thinking of when this committee came together. But you really don't need to hear from me, you need to hear from these amazing um teachers and parents that have joined us tonight. And it's my honor to introduce first um from Booker Elementary, woo-hoo, first grade teacher, Ms. Nolan. And, and she is so invested because she's also a graduate of our Spring ISD, Westfield, right, Westfield High School. So we're so excited to have her. Ms. Nolan, please talk and share with the committee, the process and everything that you, you've gone through in this.
Hello, my name is Antwinan Nolan. I'm so excited to be here tonight. Working on the committee was absolutely amazing. First, let me start out by saying thank you to my administration, um, Ms. Wamek and Ms. Wright, because they are always constantly instilling the guiding principles and also implementing the core values. And when they do that, we're able to open, we are openly communicating as a campus. So I am then able to bring back any concerns and challenges that we have as a campus. And I was able to do that working on the committee. And we were able to address these concerns with realistic solutions. And some of those solutions were to extend our planning time, our conference time. So we are able to dig deeper into the data, we are able to build and strengthen our skills so we can help and assist our scholars. And we need that additional time to work together as a, as a team, as a campus for our PLCs as well. Also, we were allowed it to have days for parent conferences, parent conferences. We have one in the spring, I'm sorry, one in the fall and one in the spring. So this gives us additional time to meet with our parents, not only by So this gives us additional time to meet with our parents, not only by phone, but as well as Google meets. As you all know, we are living in a new world, and we are able to address concerns that we have with parents and also give praises and kudos to students who are doing well. So we want to make sure that we're reaching out to them, so that is something that we needed as teachers, we needed that additional time. We're also having four half-days. Our half-days are going to come at the end of the nine-weeks grading cycle. Since we're all going to be on the same grading cycle for nine weeks, having that additional time, we're able to have more parent conferences and also continue to grade and meet with our team and lesson plan and just build and learn and just grow together. And that is time that we needed as well. We're also going to have a preparation day after Christmas break. So this gives us time to prepare for when our scholars come back, so we're ready to hit the ground running. I think that teachers are going to be excited about the time that they have. We have listened and we have brought the concerns to the table. And I believe that with the calendars, both calendars that were created, that concerns and challenges were addressed. And I think it's amazing, I think the committee came together, we talked it out. We, like Dr. Hannah Hosa said, we met for hours, we talked about summer school. Ms. Dela Fuente brought up summer school. We had so many conversations about what the calendar would look like, how would be productive, how would be productive for students, as well with their attendance. That was something that also was brought in. There are so many challenges and concerns, and I believe that as a committee, we made the best decisions that we could make. And we brought two amazing calendars forward for everyone to vote on in the spring community. And I believe that teachers will be very happy. I'm very happy, I'm very excited, so, yes.
Yay, thank you so much, Ms. Nolan. We really appreciate your support in the process. We also, she mentioned Ms. Dela Fuente, she is a fourth-grade teacher at Burchett. And she has been at Burchett for a long time, she is truly a hero of Spring ISD. She started out as an aide and then moved into the teaching field as a teacher now and continues at Burchett. And so we'd like to hear from you, please.
So I just want to kind of, I want to say good evening, and I was, I felt honored when Dr. Hannah Hosa asked me if, you know, I could join, I was like, sure, absolutely. It was, you know, I don't mind doing the work. Like Ms. Nolan said, you know, we met quite often for the ACE Committee, as well as for those of us that were part of the Calendar Committee. One of the days, we had to reschedule because we had that horrible storm that was coming in. And, you know, Dr. H said, no, I need to make sure that y'all get home safe. And we just rescheduled, and then I think something else happened and we had to reschedule too. One of the things that, you know, at my campus, the feedback that I've gotten, they've been very excited, because I've even created like a Google form for the staff at Burchett to use to give me feedback. And they've come up and said, oh, my gosh, my question was answered, you really asked Dr. Watson? I said, you asked me to ask him, and I did. And I think it's really important that we represent our campuses and know that, you know, what, that their voices really are being heard. And, you know, just the different things, and when they asked me for the, you know, well, what was my opinion on the calendars, and, you know, what were the biggest differences? And I said, you know, we worked really hard and took everything we had to consider to put it into together. And for me, and I think Ms. Starr was on, one of the times had mentioned, and it is something that I completely agree with, is, you know, the, for me, the big difference was when we start, because one calendar starts that first week in August, and then the next one starts like the week after. And, you know, UIL came up and all those opportunities for those students, like in marching band and football, for them to practice, that came up and it was a discussion. And there was just so much respect within everyone, everyone's voice was heard that represented their campuses or, you know, the parents that were on there. And so it was just a great opportunity and experience to be a part of this committee and the people that I've got to meet.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate your service. And finally, we must present Ms. Manning, one of our amazing parents, who has been with Spring ISD for many years as well. Ms. Manning?
Good evening, President Newhouse and trustee and Dr. Watson. Thank you again, Dr. Hannah Hosa for inviting me. This was a great opportunity. Mr. Adams asked me, and I said, okay, but it's been a great opportunity. And I appreciate my voice being heard, because my family laughed because they said, Dr. Hannah Hosa said, Ms. Manning, do you have something to say? And I was like, okay, but it was just interesting to know that my voice was heard. Just a little background, I've been in spring for, I have children for fifteen years, my children have been going to spring schools. And it have been a great experience. I have the last two, one coming out of the canyon next year and one coming out of winter this year, so it's just the last two. But the committee was awesome, and I see that the calendar that I kind of was like, okay, as a parent, we look at Memorial Day, everybody, and I also thought about the teachers in house, parents, like, well, they could miss the last two days. And I know that would affect the district as a whole and also the students, so that's why I was looking at the Memorial Day. And when Dr. Hannah Hosa said, well, Ms. Manning, what else you have involved? It kind of made me feel like, okay, I do play a part, I always play a part with the teachers and the school and the principals, but just playing a part as a whole in the community, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate just being on both of the committees and just listening to Dr. Watson. I was like, okay, and he gave me an idea of how more of the school, by being in education, I know how the school, but just give me more broad picture of why we have students, why we need our students to be enrolled in the district, and how important it is to have a school in a district. And I'm not going to charter school, but instead pushing them in the school district, and I really appreciate it. And I thank you for asking me, and I thank you for accepting me.
Thank you, and we'll turn it back over to Dr. Hannah Hosa.
Yes, ma'am. I was just going to ask if you could go back to slide four, because you weren't presenting, just so that the audience can see who all was engaged in the committee and getting the work out. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Ms. Durant. This is the smaller committee that met ongoing to develop the calendar that, you know, Ms. Manning talked about, her experience, Ms. Nolan. And so, yes, this is the smaller committee, and then we bumped it up to the ACE Committee as a whole, and then brought it back to the small committee. But just every year, we have an amazing committee, I have to tell you. This year, with all of the unknowns and having to, you know, try to do our very best and project with the what-ifs, the committee was very engaged, and I think you heard someone say, you know, we may have disagreed, we had some really good discussions, but at the end of the day, the committee was amazing at looking at what was best for the district. And also, I think all of them made the point of having the opportunity to have the superintendent and ask those questions, ask those hard questions and get the answers. Has been, I think, just being a part of the ACE Committee, very beneficial, but also part of the calendar development, very beneficial. And so, yes, absolutely, special thanks to our committee members that stayed on with us. We truly appreciate their support, and most importantly, I want to say their leadership. All of our members are leaders, these three that stayed with us, and of course, Ms. Starr that you know, leaders in the roles that they play in their school and their community. And so now, just wanted to do, I know, hopefully you had the opportunity to see the results. But you heard the superintendent share, this year, we had many more people participate. So really, that tells me the committee got out there and shared with their community members, their own schools. So we had a huge, almost two thousand more votes or inputs. And hopefully, you took the time to read the comments that you received. But you can see survey participation, relatives of students, that means, you know, any family members. This is the first time we've had more participation from them. The results, you can see, we've been able to break it down as to who chose what. We had option A, I think you heard Ms. Dela Fuente talk about, one calendar started a little bit earlier, one started a little bit later. Option A was one that started a little bit later, very similar to this year's calendar. Option B starts early and lets out early before Memorial Day. And so you'll see here by people, and overall, you can tell that option B is what the community requested. With fifty-two percent of the people that participating being members of the community and forty-eight percent being members of our staff or Spring ISD employees. And option B, which is the calendar that ends before Memorial Day, is the one that was selected by the people that participated in our survey.
Dr. Hannah Hosa, you have some typos on that bar graph.
Yes, please. No, no, thank you.
You have the taller bar being twenty-six percent and the lower one twenty-nine.
Oh, thank you, I see that right there.
Look at the next ones, the lower one is fourteen and the higher one is eleven, so I think those are reversed as well.
Those two are flipped, we'll address them.
They don't seem to be representative of the amounts on a couple of them, but, you know, just when you're going through the typos, you'll find it.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
I just, if we're going to put this out for the public, I want to make sure it's right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say it's encouraging, because I think this is the first time we've seen the community, the relatives, participate higher than administration and staff, it's usually staff, so I'm excited to see. I think it may be the virtual environment that we're in, and this is another positive effect that we're getting more input from our parents, so.
Got to say, I'm surprised. You know, I thought that people wouldn't want to start earlier, but I guess getting out before Memorial Day is the plus. I support it either way.
Thank you, are there any other questions or comments?
Calendar B, so the administration, based on the feedback that we received, not only from our Spring ISD staff or employees and the community, the administration is recommending option B, calendar B, that, as we pointed out, does start earlier and ends right before Memorial Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two instructional calendar B as recommended by the administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two instructional calendar option B as recommended by the administration.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams Jr. and seconded by Justine Durant that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two instructional calendar option B as recommended by the administration. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Janet Gonzalez, it's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Janet Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Just an FYI to the public, our consent agenda, we thoroughly went through during our work session. All members are familiar with the consent agenda. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, sections five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, and five-five-one-point-oh-seven-six. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now nine oh nine P.M. Okay, we will now reconvene this, we will now resume this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now ten seventeen P.M. As we address the items discussed during closed session, are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board declare the probationary contract of Suzette Jordan to be void pursuant to chapter twenty-one of the Texas Education Code. Approve the termination of her employment with Spring ISD effective immediately and authorize the superintendent of schools or designate and notify this employee of the action taken by the board.
It has been moved by Winford Adams Jr., seconded by Justine Durant, that the board declare the probationary contract of Suzette Jordan to be void pursuant to chapter twenty-one of the Texas Education Code. Approve the termination of her employment with Spring ISD effective immediately and authorize the superintendent of schools or designate to notify this employee of the action taken by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate at the end of the contract term, the probationary contract of Rosella Ryans Tucker as presented in closed session, and to authorize the superintendent to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to chapter twenty-one of the Texas Education Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Kelly Hodges, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate at the end of the contract term, the probationary contract of the probationary contract of Rosella Ryans Tucker as presented in closed session and to authorize the Superintendent to provide notice of the Board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter Twenty-One of the Texas Education Code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move the Board approve the Superintendent's recommendation to suspend the following employee without pay pending discharge, Rosella Ryans Tucker as presented in closed session and to authorize the Superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the Board's actions and rights pursuant to Chapter Twenty-One of the Texas Education Code.
Second.
It's been moved by Janet Gonzalez, seconded by Winford Adams Jr. that the Board approve the Superintendent's recommendation to suspend the following employee without pay pending discharge, Rosella Ryans Tucker as presented in closed session and to authorize the Superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the Board's action and rights pursuant to Chapter Twenty-One of the Texas Education Code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board grant an easement consisting of zero-point-four-seven-one-five acres.
Madam President, I move that the Board grant an easement consisting of zero-point-four-seven-one-five acres of land for sidewalk and other related purposes to Harris County as discussed in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Janet Gonzalez, that the Board grant an easement consisting of zero-point-four-seven-one-five acres of land for sidewalk and other related purposes to Harris County as discussed in closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There are no other items on tonight's agenda. So I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Janet Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There is no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned at ten twenty-three P.M.